All right, I'll call the November 20th, 2023 Select Board Meeting to order at 7:00. I have Aaron Underhill, Ellen Rosenfeld, and myself tonight, and we have a pretty good agenda, a lot of interesting and fun things on it, but it shouldn't be a long meeting. So I'm going to start with a few announcements, and first announcement we have is about the Empower Millis update on the rates. I'm going to have our Energy Director speak to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bob Weiss, Energy Manager for the town. And in the last couple of weeks, about 2,800 families and businesses in town got a -- why am I sure I'm holding it up to the right camera? Got this letter in the mail. Empower Millis is the town's energy electrical aggregation. And every -- this year, we are coming up with new rates, and the new rate this year is going to be at 16.17 cents per kilowatt hour. This is good timing because Eversource just announced their rate, which is at 17.25, so a little bit of a savings for those folks who are automatically into the energy aggregation. We've been around since 2020, and in the last three years, the 2,800 customers in Millis's aggregation and Empower Millis have saved about $2 million. So that's a considerable savings in the last two years. So the information is available. They can call me at 508-906-3742. They can also take a look at the town website, and you'll see the light bulb on the front page, and it'll say Empower Millis Community Electrical Aggregation. So, once again, the new rate is at 16 -- is at 16 cents per kilowatt hour, and it is better than Eversource's. And if you have any questions as to whether you should go with Empower Millis or with a third-party aggregation, you can always give me a call. So, thank you.
Thanks. And just a couple of questions. This rate is two years, you said?
It's a two-year rate.
And it's locked for those two years? So this is the rate for those two years?
It is locked, and Eversource goes out every six months for their rate. So they may come down in the next -- in July, they may go up. We'll have to be careful and watch.
And the advantage of this is you can get in or out of it at any point. It's not a contractual rate that you're locked into like on a lease.
That is correct. Sometimes on the contracts you get with a third-party supplier, the -- you're penalized if you leave early before the contract is up. With Empower Millis, you can leave if you find a lower rate, and you can always come back in, and there's no penalty. The other thing is if you're comparing rates, remember that Empower Millis rate includes, the default rate includes, an extra 5% investment in renewable energy in New England. So that's all included in the price.
Well, I have a quick question. You said 2,800 of these mailings went out. Did they just go out to the existing people, or every resident in Millis? I didn't get one.
Yeah, they go out to -- first of all, they went out to everyone who was already at the default rate. They go out to everyone who is an Eversource customer in town, including small businesses, and anyone who -- but people who already are locked into a contract, Eversource lets us know that, so we don't send notices out to those folks.
Okay. And if we didn't get one, can we pick up one piece of paper from you, or we just go on the website?
Go on the website. That's the best way to do it. And that's the best way to sign up or to sign out of it. Thank you.
All right, great. The next announcement is Santa's Parade to the Bandstand. This will be December 2nd, 4:00 p.m. lineup. Where's the lineup?
At the old Anan Hope parking lot.
Okay, so we'll be lining up at 4:00 p.m. at the Anan Hope parking lot. Parade starts at 5:00, and we're going to march through downtown to the park. It'll end at the bandstand over by the Clyde Brown School. And everybody's invited. Aaron is in charge of any questions. Says so in the flyer. So I encourage everybody to take part in this. It sounds like a good time. So December 2nd, 4:00 p.m., parade starting at 5:00, going to the bandstand. There'll be parade pictures with Santa, refreshments, and official toy drive drop-off location. So there's a lot going on that day. All right. Anything you'd like to add, or did I cover it adequately?
You did a fine job.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next, we have -- just a reminder, the municipal buildings will be closed for the Thanksgiving holidays on Thursday and Friday, correct?
Yes.
Noon on Wednesday.
Starting at noon on Wednesday. So will be closed noon on Wednesday, all day Thursday, all day Friday for the holidays, reopening on Monday. All right. All right. Now we have a presentation of -- from our representative, Marcus Vaughn, to the Rec Department. So, Marcus, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm thrilled to stand before you today as one of the state representatives for Millis in acknowledging the incredible achievement of the Millis Recreation Services Program and their dedicated volunteers. Together, they have surpassed in all expectations by contributing a remarkable 500 collective hours to our beloved Millis community in 2023. This achievement is a testament to the unwavering spirit and commitment of our community members. I want to extend a heartfelt gratitude to Aaron and Chris from Millis Rec, Millis Fire Department, Millis Police Department, Millis Public Schools, the town of Millis, Community Impact, and the SAFE Coalition, all of which are essential partners in making this endeavor a success. Their collaborative efforts exemplify strength and unity that define Millis. Thank you for making our community stronger and more vibrant through your selfless dedication. And now, I have this distinct privilege to present a citation from the House of Representatives congratulating Millis Recreation Services Program and its volunteers for their outstanding achievement. So I will read this citation. Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Millis Rec Services in recognition for the outstanding achievement of volunteering over 500 service hours back to their community. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success of all endeavors. Given on the day of the 6th of November 2023 at the State House in Boston, Massachusetts by our Speaker of the House, Ronald Mariano, and offered by your state representative, myself, Marcus Vaughn. So, thank you very much, and congratulations for all the service hours that you were able to donate to the town.
Would it be possible to get a quick picture? I mean, this is pretty cold.
Yeah, yeah. We were just checking.
John has one.
Our official photographer is not here tonight.
I will step in.
John Scanell.
event for Millis. It's the appointment of a new police officer. Chief, you want to start that out for us?
Good evening. So tonight, I'm going to be appointing a new police officer to the Millis Police Department. Just to be clear, he's not new by any stretch of the imagination to the world of policing. This is not a new position. This is to replace an officer that has been out for three years and is going to be retired. So with that being said, before I get going, I know there's several police officers from our department and outside the Millis Police Department here in attendance. I think it's important for the town and the board to understand that it's not easy to get police officers in today's day and age, especially the last three or four years. As I'm sure you well know, that there's been a mass exodus from the profession, and yet, we don't have a problem getting people here, right? Specifically, the last few transfers we've taken, they've ranged from one year on the job to 20 years on the job. So just think about that for one second, because for you to walk away from a police department that you've been at for, in Mr. Jewett's case, 12, and we had other officers that have walked away, that's all you know. So that's a pretty big leap, but that speaks volumes to the officers that we have here working at the Millis Police Department, who some are here on their own time tonight, and to the town and the support of the town. They want to be here. They come here because they want to be here. So that's huge for us and for the town as well. When we take a transfer, usually they come with some incentives behind them, such as like what they can do, what they -- what can they bring to the PD. And I'll get into what Brian has to offer our PD. In addition to, I know that we're all over the internet with social media, and whether it's a food drive, a leadership academy, or any other community project that the police department does, like, our department is awesome at being community-friendly, but at the same time, when they have to flick the switch and go into police mode, police officer mode, they do it effectively, they do it smart, and they do it correct every time. So with that, I can't be more thankful than that. I mean, it makes my job easy, right? But again, all the acknowledgement has to go to the folks behind me, because for us to pull people in, talented officers in here, it's a direct reflection of my coworkers. So with that being said, I come before you tonight with Mr. Brian Jewett. I would ask the town to consider the appointment for the position of full-time police officer. Again, this isn't a new position. This is a replacement. Mr. Jewett graduated from the MBTA Police Academy in 2011. Upon graduation from the academy, he has worked that period of time at the Ashland Police Department. I should add, just prior to going to the full-time police academy, he worked here in Millis for two and a half years as an intermittent police officer. His duties and responsibilities at his previous job included a field training officer since 2012, department firearms instructor since 2014, and a TASER instructor since 2016. He also holds a bachelor's degree from Framingham State College, and he has a wide range of experience, having worked in Ashland for 12 years. Mr. Jewett's going to be a phenomenal addition to our police department, and I would ask the town to consider the appointment pending successful physical, drug screen, and psychological exam. I should also add, he had his physical today. Follow-up on the psychological on Wednesday. I'm asking for the provisional pending appointment just because of the holidays that are coming up, and I don't want to waste time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Based upon the enthusiastic recommendation of the Chief of Police, I am requesting that the board vote to ratify my appointment of Brian Jewett as a full-time police patrol officer, subject to a successful psychological examination and drug screen results.
Okay. I moved that the board vote to ratify the town administrator's appointment of Brian Jewett as a full-time police patrol officer, subject to successful physical examination, psychological examination, and drug screen results.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to ratify the town administrator's appointment of Brian Jewett as a full-time police officer, subject to successful physical examination, psychological examination, drug screening results. All in favor?
Aye.
Pass unanimously.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And you live on a good road.
Just throwing that out there.
Should be some conflict, right?
Exactly.
I'm sure some of you will.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we got to get you to let you know what the women.
Way to clear a room, Dan.
We really don't. This is putting us back in my wheelhouse now.
Oh, we don't.
You know, I was sitting there in a sweatshirt today, all gross from the warehouse. I said, I'm going to put on a shirt just for the accident. Glad I did.
I'm glad you did, too.
I found myself an extra 15 minutes.
All right.
Way to clear a room, Dan.
Well, it's not Dan yet. It's the Green Communities. Maybe that's what they're not interested in.
Could be.
I find this fascinating.
Now, we're back to the usual crowd. Thank you.
All right, the item up next is the approval of the Green Communities Annual Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we all know, every year, the town of Millis files a report, its annual report, to the Green Communities Division on our annual energy performance.
Just one second, Bob. We're just going to break up the crowd outside at our own risk.
I understand. Exuberant. So we look at the buildings, we look at the facilities that the town has, the open spaces, the streetlights, vehicles, anything that uses -- consumes energy in the town. Good news is this year, we found that there was a 19.5% reduction in total energy consumption for the town. And this is measured in BTUs, which reflects greenhouse gas and the carbon footprint of the town. So that's a very significant -- the goal for every Green Community is a 20% reduction. So we've done very well this year. One example, electricity, we consumed as a town, just the municipalities and the schools and all the departments consumed 2.5 megawatts of energy. But 30 -- 21% of that is from our own rooftops. It's from our solar arrays, and another 30% of that is from the net metering that we get, which is a full solar field that is located in Carver. So in addition to that, we've also had a 15% reduction in the consumption used by our vehicles, mostly gasoline. And so that means that our fire department, our police department, the schools, the DPW are all much more efficient in the vehicles they use. So tonight, and you have the report there in your packet, I'm asking the board to authorize the chair to sign the report, and we can send it on to the Green Communities Division, be qualified to get the grant that we've asked for for this year's Green Communities program.
Any questions from the board regarding this?
Nope. Riverdink.
We did riverdink. Those that have left early have missed the fun of this.
They did. They missed an awful lot. Little did they know. I'm sure it'll be in the papers tomorrow.
Well covered. It was a good report. I did take the time to read it today, well, over the weekend, actually. And I'll be glad to sign this, so I need a motion.
Okay, motion. I moved that the board vote to approve the FY23 Green Communities Annual Report and to authorize the chair to sign on the town's behalf.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the FY23 Green Communities Annual Report and to authorize the chair to sign on the town's behalf. All in favor?
Aye.
Pass unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Next item up is the 1098 Main Street Sewer Connection Review. Mr. McKay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is one of those stories of how did it happen, but it can only happen in Millis. 1098 is the old -- the bank, what was it?
Middlesex.
Middlesex. Middlesex Savings Bank at the corner of Pleasant Street
Oh, yeah.
and Main Street.
Yep.
And that was sold approximately, that's about seven, eight years ago. And the dental group opened it. Very nice people, great business people. So about five years ago, they had a backup, a sewer backup. And they came to us, and, you know, they said, what can we do? So they went out and they hired their plumber to come in, and lo and behold, it was found out that they were on a septic system. And the town of Millis had been charging Middlesex Savings Bank way back, ever since they bought it from the previous owner, water and sewer, for many, multiple years. So once we found that out, the new owners, luckily we stopped charging them sewer immediately, which they weren't into it that long. It wasn't maybe like several months that they were into the -- into operation. So now they've been -- and this went on for three, four, five years. It was now was the idea of how are we going to get them connected to sewer? Because the way the building was situated, you know, the town owns, as you all know, we own the parking, a good chunk of the parking lot, and we own the right-of-way, the way the Farm Street used to come out onto Pleasant Street. So we started working with multiple engineers going back and back. And then finally, last year, they had heard my advice. I told them to get in touch with Dan, and here we are tonight with a valid plan that's been revised a couple of times. We were looking at maybe going out to Main Street. And we didn't really -- Mike Cotter, you know, GCG, and I really didn't like the idea of cutting across Main Street to bring in the sewer. Even though they do front it, so there's nothing illegal here. I mean, when I say front it, it -- the corner of their property fronts the sewer main. There's no stub there for it, so they're going to have to dig across. And it got so close, it was right near a telephone pole. So we decided that really -- deep, was it 22 feet deep? 18?
The main there is 17 feet deep. It wouldn't be that deep, but the main is 17 feet.
Right. And they would have had to put like a chimney into it all the way down into the -- so we looked at going out into the back of it, which, you know, it's under your jurisdiction. It's under the DPW jurisdiction. It's a right-of-way. We felt it was best to have them run it out the back side of the building, down the walkway, and tie it into the cul-de-sac. You know, there's a cul-de-sac right there. There's a manhole right there. It is more expensive for the, you know, the person to bring it out that way. So we do have the -- Mike sent a letter. I don't know if you -- Mike from GCG sent the letter. There's nothing in there that I don't think that we can't work out, and it's minuscule stuff that the DPW and Dan can work it out. But the main focus of this is to -- so I still think it's under the right that I can approve the tie-in to the sewer. The major thing is here that I'm here is I would ask that the Select Board allow the town administrator to sign the entrance fee of waiving the $4,095. I can assure you that they paid more than $4,095. And again, these are great people. They've worked with us, never like demanding, I want, I want, I want. They were very good about this whole process, and they've been paying a VACTA to come out and cleaning out their main, because they still have operations. So they've been cleaning it out in many, for many years. So I did present this to the Enterprise Committee and Mr. Duffy.
Last Wednesday.
Last Wednesday, and they were in support of the, you know, the waiver of the $4,095. Dan's here, if you have any questions. I asked him, you know, to come.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, please.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. It's his meeting.
How -- it's okay. I'll take you. How is it? How is it? Help me here. The DPW goes out and checks meters, and you get a -- how is it that they were on septic, you never checked a meter? What kind of bill?
We do. So we read the meter, and you're reading a water meter. So they have a water service. So your sewer bill, it's charged off of the usage of the water bill.
There's no sewer meter.
Just a piece of it. Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Duffy, did you want to add anything from the Enterprise Committee?
Jim Duffy, Enterprise Advisory Committee. Maia Culpa, I was supposed to send an email, a memo, to the Select Board saying we reviewed it, we approved, we recommend that the connection fee be waived.
All right.
But you're here.
That worked. Just as effective.
Yes.
All right.
More effective.
And we get to see you.
Any other questions from anybody on the board to any of our three, unless either of you bobber?
I don't think so.
Nope.
Okay. All right.
Okay. I moved that the board, acting as sewer commissioner, has approved the sewer entrance and connection for 1098 Main Street and to waive the $4,095 application fee per the recommendation of the DPW director.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for the Select Board, acting as sewer commissioners, to approve the sewer interest and connection for 1098 Main Street and to waive the $4,095 application fee per the recommendations of the DPW director. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass unanimously.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Been a long road.
Thanks.
Am I still here?
You are.
You're up next again. Continue.
So Winston, I would ask that hopefully this is the last change order from Winston Builders in the amount of $6,882.
Well, actually, you moved us slightly out of order.
Did I do? I'm sorry.
Let's do the DPW equipment purchases first.
Okie dokie.
I didn't realize it was a meeting tonight.
Which is more fun.
I don't know how you can skip that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That saved the best for last. That's literally on the bottom. So I'd ask that the Select Board allow the town administrator to sign a contract with Liberty Chevrolet in the amount of $84,906, which that would be split 42,453 by water and sewer, and this was approved at the Article Number Three at the last November Town Meeting.
You want to make the first motion there?
I do.
Oh, any questions about that? I mean, it was approved at Town Meeting. We discussed it in detail at that point, so.
Nope. I moved that the board approve and authorize the town administrator to sign a purchase agreement through Plymouth County Commission for the purchase of a pickup truck from Liberty Chevrolet in an amount not to exceed $84,906, funded at the 11/6/23 Town Meeting under Article Three, and split between Water Enterprise in the amount of $42,453 and Sewer Enterprise in the amount of $42,453. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass unanimously.
Thank you. And the second would -- to allow the town administrator to sign a contract with Chadwick Bayros in the amount of $573,559.61, and that is for the purchase of the VACTA. And once this is signed, we will be -- that's on -- I mean, it's not on order. We should be receiving that within, once it's approved. It's actually at the shop being checked out as promised. So that would be out of the stormwater account would be -- and this was approved at the November Town Meeting, Article Number Six. The stormwater account of $430,169.71, and the remaining three would be split from the general fund, $47,796.63, water, $47,796.63, sewer, $47,796.63. And I read them because I went over this with Carol, and these are exact, and she made sure that I had to read all of them.
So it's on our motions, it says 58 cents. It's 63 cents.
It is 63 cents. Yep. Yeah, there was a revised one that was sent to Karen maybe at the end of it.
from Liberty Chevrolet in an amount not to exceed $84,906, funded at the 11-6-23 town meeting under Article Three, and split between Water Enterprise and Sewer Enterprise, each responsible for 42,453.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the board approve and authorize the town administrator to sign a purchase agreement through Plymouth County Commission for the purchase of a pickup truck from Liberty Chevrolet in the amount not to exceed $84,906, funded at the 11-6-23 town meeting under Article Three, and split between Water Enterprise in the amount of 42,453 and Sewer Enterprise in the amount of 42,453. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you. And the second would, to allow the town administrator to sign a contract with Chadwick-Barros in the amount of $573,559.61, and that is for the purchase of the VACTA. And once this is signed, we will be, that's on, I mean, it's not on order. We should be receiving that within, once it's approved. It's actually at the shop being checked out as promised. So that would be out of Stormwater account would be, and this was approved at the November town meeting, Article Number Six. The Stormwater account of 430,169.71. And the remaining three would be split from the general fund, 47,796.63. Water, 47,796.63. Sewer, 47,796.63. And I read them because I went over this with Carol, and these are exact, and she made sure that I, I had to read all of them.
So it's, on our motions, it says 58 cents. It's 63 cents.
It is 63 cents. Yep. Yeah, there was a revised, one that was sent to Karen maybe at the end of it.
Yeah.
I have it here if you want to.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and make your motion.
Okay, ready?
Yep.
I moved that the board approve and authorize the town administrator to sign a purchase agreement through Sourcewell Government Contracts for the purchase of a VACTA truck from Chadwick-Barros in an amount not to exceed $573,559.61, funded at the 11-6-23 town meeting under Article Six, and split between Water Enterprise, Sewer Enterprise, and Stormwater Enterprise, each responsible. Oh, no, no, sorry, back it up. A split between Water Enterprise in the amount of $47,796.63, Sewer Enterprise in the amount of $47,796.63, and Stormwater Enterprise in the amount of $430,169.71, and General Fund in the amount of $47,796.63. Is that right?
That's correct.
Second.
See, when you say not to exceed, I would have just put a higher number in there, rounded up a buck and call it a day. But I'm not the town accountant.
This is a Carol.
Yes. All right, it's been moved and seconded. The board approve and authorize the town administrator to sign a purchase agreement through Sourcewell Government Contracts for the purchase of a VACTA truck from Chadwick-Barros in the amount not to exceed $573,559.61, funded at the 11-6-23 town meeting under Article Six, and split between Water Enterprise, between Water Enterprise in the amount of $47,796.63, Sewer Enterprise in the amount of $47,796.63, Stormwater Enterprise in the amount of $430,169.71, and the General Fund in the amount of $47,796.63. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you. And lastly.
Each of those up to 80, anyway.
We're getting ready to close out the Wells One and Two PFAS Plant Project. We'll probably have a sign-off at your next meeting, if not early January. And we leave this, well, we know this is the last change order that's coming your way for this project. And I'll have a breakdown for your next meeting so you know exactly how much we've spent. The project is still under budget and on time, so that's the good news. So I would ask that you, it says number 8A and 8B, but the way it was filed, it's all in one. But there's a breakdown. I gave you the two breakdowns for an amount of $6,882.
Yeah. Any questions about this first? No? Okay, go ahead.
I move that the board approve and authorize the town administrator to sign change order number eight. Should I read the motion or do it his way?
I would read the motion.
Read the motion, yeah.
All right, 8A in the amount of $5,026, and change order 8B in the amount of $1,856, for a total of $6,882 with Winston Builders for the DeAngelo's Water Treatment Plant PFAS Upgrade Project.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the board approve and authorize the town administrator to sign change order number 8A in the amount of $5,026, and change order 8B in the amount of $1,856, for a total of $6,882 with Winston Builders for the DeAngelo's Water Treatment Plant PFAS Upgrade Project. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously.
Thank you. So Mr. Duffy's here. If, just a quick, Enterprise Committee, Advisory Committee, we do meet monthly. We are definitely making headway on a lot of things that have been stale, stalled for quite a while. Mainly the construction guidelines. They were approved, but we'll be ready for you at your December meeting. That's a big thing. It's been a long, long, long time since we've been looking at that. So I want to thank Mr. Duffy and the committee because we do meet on monthly, and we're moving forward.
Awesome. Thank you for doing that because it's a big time saver for us up here today for somebody else working on it. All right. Next item up is Committee Liaison Update.
My favorite part.
Yeah, Ellen's competitive nature. I attended town meeting.
I have two this time.
Two?
Two.
Please.
You go first. Two goes first.
There was a school building committee.
Yeah.
And they just talked about the process to finalize a designer. It goes to the MSBA for a process to vet out the three choices that we have, and then it'll come down to a decision. So it was a fairly brief meeting, just kind of updating us on that, you know, timeline. And then the LEPC, the Local Emergency Planning Committee. We had a meeting today, talked about hazard mitigation and different emergency planning for sheltering. And there'll be more work to come, but it was also a brief meeting. We will have a follow-up meeting via Zoom to talk about the specific hazard mitigation areas in Millis and get a draft plan together. And there's also plans for community engagement, presentation, potentially at a Select Board meeting, maybe to educate the public on hazard mitigation.
There's two.
There's two. I only had one.
Uh huh.
I went to the Charles River Pollution Control Meeting. And they just mostly go over where they are with each town and how many new sewer hookups. And Millis, I think, had six, which I believe are still all from the Glen. Because I don't think anybody, since we lifted our moratorium, has hooked on to sewer, other than what's already been pre.
In the pipeline.
Right. It's already been put aside for them. So, and I went to town meeting, too, Craig, so there's that.
I was just trying to get on the board with something.
Yeah.
Tomorrow night, I've got the MBTA Advisory Committee.
Doesn't count forward.
I just let you know. Just remind me next time when we meet that I went to something. All right.
Mr. Chair, can I ask you a question about something?
Please.
Mention.
Lisa Harden, 56 Walnut. I just have a question for Erin on the school building. I was just wondering, at what point will the town get to be consulted on what's going to be built? I haven't seen anything.
Well, they don't have the designers yet, the architects, so that's the next step. So they're just, it's just early stages of being formed.
But you said there were three designs?
There's three candidates.
Oh, three candidates. Okay. I thought you had three designs. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, with the Clyde Brown, it took months to get the architect. Then we got the architect. It took months with the school, and then we went to the public, so it's a ways out still.
Takes time.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm supposed to make another motion.
You might. You packed everything up. All right, we have some minutes to be approved.
Okay.
Get your motion sheet.
My motion sheet.
That's not your motion sheet.
That's not my motion sheet. Hold on. I have my motion. I make a motion that the board approve. Oh, wait a minute. What about the water sewer commitment?
That's after this.
That's next, after.
We're not done, Don. You've closed everything, but we're not finished.
I make a motion that the board approve the draft minutes of October 23, 2023, and November 6, 2023, as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the board approve the draft minutes from October 23, 2023, and November 6, 2023, as written. Special note here, just on the discussion side, nothing is old now, it looks like.
That's what it looks like.
We're proving new, I don't know, but everything we're proving is this year. So we're current, at least according to this.
I like it.
Yeah. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. And now.
And that's all owing to Victoria, right?
It is.
We should thank Victoria.
She left with the Mass Exodus.
People should know.
Yeah, all right.
Mr. Chair, I recommend that the board approve the water and sewer commitment for November 2023, second quarter, in the amount of $842,825.69.
I make a motion that the board approve the water sewer commitment for November 2023, second quarter, in the amount of $842,825.69.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the board approve the water sewer commitment for November 23, I'm sorry, November 2023, second quarter, in the amount of $842,825.69. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that the board approve the water and sewer commitment for October 2023 in the amount of $844,608.05.
I make a motion that the board approve the water sewer commitment for October 2023 in the amount of $844,608.05.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the board approve the water sewer commitment for October 2023 in the amount of $844,608.05. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Last motion is executive session. That concludes the regular session for tonight. We're going to be going into executive session next. So do you want to make a motion there, Ellen?
I make a motion to enter executive session to discuss the deployment of security slash public safety personnel and discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining dispatcher unit, and come back in open session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we enter executive session to discuss the deployment of security, public safety personnel, and discuss strategy with respect to the collective bargaining dispatcher union, and come back into open session for the sole purpose of adjournment. I'll poll the board. Erin?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
And I'm a yes.
Jim, don't worry about it.
Thank you. We're going to executive session.
Please.